Today, uh, Mary Ann Hixman first, this is twenty twenty five. Um, and it started. Um. The next scheduled hearing is on Wednesday, June eighteenth, twenty twenty five, at four o'clock in this room. Um, here on one eleven North Front Street. Um, can I move to swearing in city staff? Uh, Sophie, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, not to the truth?
I do.
Should we, do we have to swear in the end? Okay, great. Sorry. Um, okay, staff will call for the boards. So can you do that?
Michelle, how's it high?
Yes.
Michelle, bright?
Present.
Michelle Brown?
Present.
Michelle, too.
Present.
Uh, all right. Um. Did I forget something? No, I didn't. So, um. Now we move to public forum. Is there anyone who would like to speak to an item not related to the agenda? Great, thanks. Um, and we have a motion. Did everyone have a chance to look at the meetings from us?
Yes.
Minutes from those meetings.
Can I have a motion to approve the meeting?
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Certainly.
All those in here?
I, alright.
So, thank you. Um, all right, Sophie, would you present staff reports and meeting materials? Um, when you jump?
Um, if our applicant for COA twenty five zero zero three eight two would like to come up to the table. This is, um, an application at the I C Center Cat. It's a request for action for temporary art. I think it's the annual painting of the summer spray mural. The Short North Alliance is proposing to install a temporary mural for the twenty twenty five summer spray event. The project will take place on an approximately one hundred and sixty foot long by eight foot tall mural wall where residency artists will demonstrate live with free. One to three artists at time will spend the weekend live painting previously allocated portion of the mural. The creation is meant to build upon the creations of the artists who have painted the floor. The packet includes the name, the names selected as artists, and a mockup of the proposed mural. Staff analysis. Code section thirty one fifteen dot five states of the commission should be guided by the preserving of the proper decor of the city, the maintenance of the proper aesthetic values, the providing of maintenance, and the orderly balance in the location and size of works of art, and the prevention of light or deterioration in and around public buildings or web spot. The proposal generally meets code related to determinations by the commission. And the basis for this recommendation is thirty one fifteen that says on five determinations by the mission. Let me call up the artist information. And then the mural mockup for the share.
You, Sophie? Um, let's see, let's do your swearing in first. Rachel, will you state your name and affiliation to the case for the record?
Yes, Rachel can get her from the Short North Alliance.
Great, and then, yeah, raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and not to the truth?
Yes.
Thanks a lot. Tell the story.
Yes, um, we, uh, are looking to update the artwork on the temporary mural wall. This will be the sixth year with new murals. Um, the board, the wall needs a little bit of maintenance, so we're also going to be performing that actually this week. Um, to replace some plywood, to prime the wall, to prepare it for the new murals. Um, and, uh, and then we've got a fantastic slate of artists. We had twenty six applicants, um, and we selected these nine. Um, it's the, uh, I believe greatest number of applicants we've had in the history of the program. We were really impressed by the quality um, of the work and, um. Please, it we were able to put together a slate of emerging artists who also demonstrate so much promise um, and represent such a diversity of identities, um, from around our community. So they're all local artists. A couple of them have participated in the program in the past, um, so they're returners. Um, we think it stacks up to a really nice um, cohort of folks who will be able to, um, support and mentor one another, um, to result in some really powerful work in that space.
Thank you. We should, do we have any questions? I mean, you've done this program for so long.
Do you, uh, do you have an update on, um, that little section you were talking about?
So, um, we got some quotes on how much it would cost to maybe expand the wall, move the wall, and, you know, do a little bit more with it. It's very expensive. So, we're looking for some grant funding and we hope to be able to add um, a section specifically for the legal wall idea next year. So we've identified a grant we're gonna go after, um, to hopefully be able to move forward with that idea, because everybody we've talked to has, has been really warmly receptive to it, um, and is very supportive of the idea of as much beautification as possible in this particular space. So for this year, it's gonna look very much the same as last year. A couple of changes we'll be making. One is, because this was born out of COVID, that was the first year we did it, all the artists painted on separate weekends. Um, we found that it's a more vibrant experience and a more supportive experience for the artists if they're painting at the same time as others. So we're stacking the artists on a couple of weekends. Those will be aligned with gallery hop in the Short North when there's already high foot traffic, and we can promote it as part of the experience of coming to gallery hop. So we hope that that will also bring more folks out to see the artists at work and getting to know them as artists in the community. And then, um, are, we have, for the last several years, hired, um, somebody we are calling the curator of the summer spray program who helps conceptualize a theme for the art, um, and helps guide the artists in the development of their mural pieces and can be a sounding board for them. So that, um, artist, um, is Ariel Piquero, who has worked with us for a couple of years, has also been a summer spray artist in the past. And, um, and this year, his concept is, um, to be even more, um, uh, a design that's even more integrated. Um, so really thinking about how can we make these pieces of the puzzle rather than blocks on the wall, really fitting it together into one cohesive piece of the art. So we're really excited about the direction he's taking now.
I just wanna say you've got it down to a science and each year it just gets better and better. So, thank you. Congratulations.
Did I?
Yeah.
Lovely little prayer. I think it's great.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, can I then move forward and ask for a motion to summer spray?
I will. Uh, motion to approve the summer spray.
Second. All those in here?
Uh, I. Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Thanks.
All right, Sophie.
So next on our agenda is our public art strategy update.
All right, John Maria, would you please state your name for the record, is the record of the street, the whole truth, and not to the question raising the problem?
John, it's late.
I do.
I'm Maria Rivera. I do.
Thank you so much. Hi.
What do you do?
Hi. We're so happy to be back, um, and especially with the four of you commissioners, because each of you has received the plan. I know it was very recently, but it's a big milestone for us to have that hard copy in your hands. Um, so we're really excited to be back today and just kind of, um, touch base again, go through some highlights in it, um, talk about some of the recommendations. Um, and then really, you know, let you guys know too that we are available even between now and the next hearing, so that we could, you know, follow up, talk in depth, um, because then we know that there's a lot there that we presented you with. Um. A basic overview of where we're going to kind of talk about today is funding, uh, is one of the recommendations we made around that, staffing, um, the art in public places, committee structure, um, as well as the approval process. Um, not that all of those things have been decided, but we'd like to, you know, start the dialogue about this. Um, so you can advance to the first slide, please, Sophie. Um, again, this is maybe a cleaned up version, a pared down version of the planning phases that we have undergone to get to this point. Um, I know I don't have to tell you, but I'm just going to say it for the record, you know, that we did do extensive background and planning, stakeholder engagement, um, delivered the state of public art report, um, that also, um, you know, preceded this uh, strategy that you have in your hand, but, you know, for which a lot of this information is built on top of. Um, the visioning and development phases that we had with our steering committee, uh, and other stakeholders. And then, of course, the first draft that then we worked and through revisions, uh, very closely with the department of development to arrive with the strategy you have in your hands today. Excuse me. Um, and of course, the, the big thing that comes out of this plan is the Art in Public Places program. Um, and, you know, just at the top, just to note that this is exciting, um, it's a big milestone for our community. Um. You know, we wrote that it's a bold step forward in how our region creates plans and champions public art. Um, and this strategy recommends GCAC to be the lead organization that this Art in Public Place Program uh, Places Program sits within. Um, and that it marks a groundbreaking moment for us to have this dedicated commissioning body, uh, for the first one for the arts. Um, and we furthermore acknowledging that the role of GCAC as a trusted entity in our community as a partner in the arts. Um, the strategy recommends that the AIPP program is launched again, um, through GCAC with key stakeholders, the city, the county, um, it can fold in, obviously, the private sector and really center artists in the process as well. Um, this will be supported by, like, AIPP Advisory Committee, um, that's governed by the GCAC Board. And this board, the GCAC Board, has so far endorsed this vision by creating funding or providing funding for the next five years to get this program off the ground, uh, and is a process of, as a board, really talking through the specifics of this committee structure, uh, and working towards final approval, uh, in the near future. This is the ecosystem slide that we presented you with last week, uh, or last session, excuse me. Um, and again, it just puts, again, you know, all the people, all the big major stakeholders into, uh, an alignment, you know, that's what this plan is meant to do, so that we can produce more public art, uh, in our city. The Columbus Art Commission reviews issues, final approval of public art on and on in city property, on city property, excuse me. Um, the city of Columbus remains the key funder alongside the AIPP Committee representation and supports projects, reviews, and maintains public art. Um, and then, of course, we have Franklin County, also a key funder and participant in the program with representation in the AIPP Committee and the public. Um, the public is so integral to how we thought about this from start to finish, um, that they will be able to participate in the process of public art that appears in their neighborhoods, um, that they can be a part of not only the artist selection, but how the committees within their neighborhoods get formed, uh, and we hope that they'll be really empowered through this process. And then this next slide, I'm gonna turn over to Maria to walk over, you know, just through the funding recommendations, some of the staffing recommendations that we have in the report and the AIPP Committee structure.
So, hi, everyone. I'm gonna walk you through some of the more granular information, obviously at a high level, because there's a lot there. Um, the strategy recommends the development of a dedicated and restricted AIPP fund with sustainable funding for the development of public art. We see this as something that would involve public and private sources as well. That's one of the things that's really great about being a nonprofit program. The fact that we can access funding both from the private and the public sector, um, to be really clear. For a public art program to be successful, public funding is critical. And so, uh, we can't under, underline that enough. Uh, for this to really succeed, we need a great partnership with our public partners, the city of Columbus and Franklin County. Um, the recommendation in the, in the document is for a percent for art type of program. Um, this is where, um, a percentage is, uh, taken out of a capital improvement or capital project construction budgets and set aside for public art. Can go anywhere from point five percent to two point five percent, and it's considered, um, common and best practice for public art creation in the U.S. That is not the only model out there, there, although it is the dominant model. Uh, and the city of Columbus will have to determine what looks best for Columbus. That is something that will be an ongoing conversation. Um, GCAC, as John already mentioned, has already committed funding towards this program for the next five years. Five hundred thousand dollars every year, and on top of that, paying for the AIPP Director's salary out of GCAC. And so, we see this program as launching in the fall, potentially as just with that funding initially, and then growing as the rest of the funding comes in from the city and from Franklin County. Um, hopefully in the next, the next year. I'm gonna move on. Um, this slide talks a little bit more about why percent for art as a recommendation, so, uh, like I, like I already defined what that, what that means, but it's really widespread. Eighty-two percent of U.S. cities that have public art use percent for art ordinances for public capital projects. It is, uh, very, very common. There are situations where that funding is then combined with other sources of funding. So it could be multiple sources with that still being a part of it. Um, there are programs that don't use this. Those are much more rare and harder to find. Um, the public art, uh, within the private sphere, uh, you can see that, uh, percent for art programs are being adopted as well for private developments. That's not as common. Um, but we've seen them in Los Angeles, San Francisco, and Tampa, and that's always an interesting thing to keep in mind, as something maybe to explore in the future. Um, and, uh, also wanted to mention that Ohio has had, uh, on the state level, a percent for art program since nineteen ninety. It has been a successful program locally at the state level for a very long time.
Am I, can I ask questions at this point?
Yes, yes, please do.
So as a former Ohio Arts Council employee, I'm very well aware of our percent for art program. Is there ever a time where the, it, it, let's say the city decides to go with a percent for art, that the two would run into each other on a project? The state and the, is, would there ever be an example of that?
So, if there was a state, I, I don't.
Anything?
It would have to be, it would have to be a, a property that was mutually.
Right? I just, I was, as I was reading this, I thought, I wonder if that is a, if there could ever be, okay, we'll just put that over there.
Maybe my project.
Oh, oh.
Okay.
It's a museum or something. Yeah, like it's a state site.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I'm, it's a local.
Mm-hmm. Local venue.
A local thing.
Mm-hmm.
I can see, I, I see the dream.
Okay, well, anyway.
Not commonly.
Yeah, but, but possibility, okay.
Uh, we can go on to the next slide unless there are other questions.
We have a lot of questions. I didn't want to interrupt. But I wanna make sure.
So if you wanna.
Yeah.
Any questions that are applicable now.
Lot of questions.
Okay, good.
Yeah. Specifically around the funding component, um. I know, coming through this. So are, are we having discussions about what the bed tax is and what that, where that money goes? Because I know GCAC oversees that component of it. So what part of that funding is included in this when we're parving out monies and dollars for AIPP? No parts of it?
The, the ticket fee?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, yes. Ticket fee, uh, provides the, the orphan that we have committed to date.
Gotcha. So the five hundred K.
Right.
Is coming from the, the ticket tax. So my segue question would be, what is the budget for this commission?
So this commission doesn't have any budgetary authority, from my understanding, is this is sort of a engagement process, because the commission does have a role in public art. City Council would be the budgetary authority within the city, and the Art Commission has the ability to make recommendations to City Council if you want. So that's how I would think about the discussion. Anything that resonates with you as an Art Commissioner here, you could talk amongst yourself about whether you'd want to then recommend to City Council that they should take a look and move further.
So I'm probably into this one here. So I'll ask some questions because I don't know.
Hmm.
Okay. Um, but from an artist's perspective, and from what I know that we're talking about at the community, local artist level, is understanding the bed tax. We just don't get it, right? So, I know, how I understand it, this bed tax is creating an account that GCAC is overseeing. Um, my questions would come up often, since I've sat in the seat where, you know, we're running into maintenance for public art, all these different conversations around, uh, you know, our, our particular collection, which is the monuments and the statues of the city, right? Those kinds of things. And when we have these kind of greater conversations on how we're supporting that, it always ends up being a thing where we'll have to figure out where the money for maintenance, like, how does that all work? Is there a CAC fund that supports that maintenance, those maintenance issues?
Be a question.
I'm, I'm asking because I'm still an artist that is confused and trying to understand how that, that money is coming down and gonna be tricked, and when, when you're, when we're in the commission role, our responsibility is to be that voice of confusion, right, and understand it a little bit better. So I'm just trying to create clarity so that I can articulate it to my fellow, you know, peers, because we are still in a, a very gray area with understanding how, I mean, I'm one of the main people that lobbied in two thousand fourteen for the ticket tax. I mean, I, I thought it was gonna be a game changer for the arts community. So how do we begin to explain or see that in this? Um, and then are those fun, or is there funds being allocated to support the commission, or is it just something legal I don't understand? Uh, that we don't get a fund for to support the commission?
So the, the commission, I think, does have a small budget, really through the planning vision for the Department of Columbia, the Department of Development within the city. I think it's a fairly modest sum for maintaining works within the commission's catalog of artwork. This is somewhat separate, and maybe GCAC can respond to some of the comments and help finesse where the the line.
Before that, before that, what is the number? Because we can't just nebulously operate from a place of when there's no accountability. I would love just some accountability.
The numbers.
So, as, as Josh said, we have an annual budget for public art maintenance. I'm Mark Drablis, the.
Hey.
Oh, you're Mark. And this year is, I believe, seventy-five thousand dollars, um, which is a now insignificant increase over the last few years that has really come about as, as a result of, um, both support from the department and from the, the city. And, uh, planning division staff doing really a comprehensive analysis for the last few years. Kind of conferred with this planning process of really getting a hold of a, a complete categorization of everything that we owe. Um, you know, some of you have probably heard of being said this from Louis Taven in the past, and now Sophie. And so we went through a process of really working out what is in the public art collection. And then relatively detailed analysis from Blind Eye, is our contractor in recent years, but also Morgan Grab, who you may have met. We actually had previously worked for Blind Eye, but now work for Planning Division, and, and came up with a, a determination, what needs to be done, what, what the cost is, how much they could get done in a year. And so seventy-five right now is that working number, uh, and, and we'll continue to evaluate it to make sure that it's adequate for to keep the pieces up to date. We, we were behind, but, um, you know, in my opinion, and from what we've been shown, um, we've made a lot of ground and are not catching on. Uh, so that's the maintenance, and it's through city funding, we administer the contract, we could bring updates, uh, regular updates as, as maintenance is conducted. The ticket taxes.
Different.
If, yeah, if, whenever you want them to, I said I'm happy to, I don't know if you want them to come to table to do that, it's working whatever, so.
Yeah, Chair, I don't know how you want to see it.
I think we have a lot to get through, but, but maybe if you all feel that's critical, then last, do you want to come on?
No, I have, I, I think I have more clarity. I just would like to be okay with continuing the conversation.
I, I think it's important to know that we are not, we are not proposing any change to the control of those maintenance funds. They will continue to sit with the city, um, and, and be under the city's purview for determining what gets cleaned, restored.
And so that, that you're budgeting, you're pulling from the city's allocated planning and budget, and there's no support coming to the maintenance plan from the ticket tax, just for clarity?
It is a designated fund that was legislated specifically for certain things, certain very specific contract that designate what the ticket fee funds can be used.
Okay, so sustainability, or, so, uh, when it comes to what the city's actual art collection is, none of that ticket tax situation to support the arts has anything to do with what we already have in our collection. The rest. All right.
Yeah. Going, I got that. Going forward, going forward, it could, because we're taking a portion of that money and putting it specifically to public art.
Okay.
Um, the process, you have to dangerous.
Right, so I guess, as a, you know, when I think about being on the commission and how is the, look and support the commission, um, I remember several conversations about this, um, the next steps to ma- maintenance and things, and it sounds like we've got, we've got that figured out. It sounds like we've figured that out. My next thing would be, okay, so our collection would only increase, right? Our collection would only get larger, and actually what it sounds like is this AIPP thing could potentially make the collection even lo- two times larger in like two years. I mean, it has the potential to just take off. Um, so how is what's happening, that kind of ecosystem of AIPP, working with the, the needs that are gonna come down for commission?
Well, I will say that. And would it be important to distinguish that there will still be, maybe in the future, two separate collections, right? Like, this is not, the work that AIPP is proposing is not necessarily contributing to the city's collection.
Okay.
Maybe there's a really small portion of that that will, but the majority, that will likely not, right? It's a separate collection for front and counter.
Okay, so then the only thing that comes to mind for me is when I think about when the loss of, like, the control on, for example, like, for me, monuments and statues and all those things, that's, that, the city needs to know where those are, right? I, I mean, if we're paying homage to individuals with statues, that needs to be approved through the city, period. So if there's an AIPP project that is a monument, a statue, any kind of project like that, it makes me nervous on the, like, where we're going with this. Because, you know, I've got the history preservation background. I'm thinking a lot about what it means when, you know, we're not discussing content first and what is actually being created. So I'm just kind of curious how we're navigating this plan because, and how it's going to literally ignite, right, these different projects. And as the city sees those projects kind of erected and happening, at one point, is the commission a part of those conversations? Because when it comes to monuments, statues, or certain things, that, that, that's a different.
So there are a couple of things that I want to touch on. First, uh, I want to touch on the maintenance, which I think is such an important thing. And, um, among the recommendations in the plan is that whenever there's a new project, maintenance is brought up in that design process. So there won't be projects that appear without a maintenance plan. That's gonna be part of the requirement. And so, um, for projects that are in the city of Columbus, the city has stated that they will continue to be in charge of maintenance. Not all of the projects will be in the city of Columbus. Not all of the projects would be on public property. Anything that's in the AIPP program, maintenance would become part of the charge of the AIPP program. So there is, so regardless of where the project lies, there will need to be a maintenance plan associated with it before it moves forward. So that's, that's a really critical thing. So that's, that's a really critical thing. You were also talking about at which point will the C A C become engaged in the process? And so we're going to touch on it in some slides a little later, but I can give you a brief overview. The C A C will continue to play the role of final approval for all projects in, on, over the city of Columbus property. So the, the, the C A C will be involved in the way that it has in the past in terms of being the final source of approval. There is also the need to touch base with the C A C regarding site approval. And so we are envisioning that happening through the annual plan that's developed for, every year, there would be an annual plan it through the A I P P program that would kind of outline priority projects for that year as well as give updates on continuing projects. That plan within be used as a way of sharing all those projects with the C A C to start talking about site approval. The approval process within the A I P P program will involve setting up individual project selection teams. Our goal is to have art across the city and get allowing people from those communities to have a voice in that selection process. And so the smaller committees would be kind of just project based. Our goal is to also provide a stipend for community members to grant access so that more people can be engaged and participate in that process. And then we would also invite artists, other people with expertise. And ideally, we would love to have C A C members sitting on these teams as well to provide expertise in, in that selection process. That, that process would also then need to intertwine with the C A C's approval process, which means that we would want for there to be alignment in terms of what is the criteria that's going to drive the selection. And so we see that alignment to be a really important thing. And one of the things that is a, a part of the A I P P process is public engagement. And so we propose that that becomes something that the C A C can also look at. Not all projects that are a part of the city will need to go through the A I P P program. If there is a pro- a project that does not need funding and they are, they have the expertise in-house and they feel confident, they will still need to go through the C A C. The city cannot make a, a pro- a project participate in the A I P P program. So the C A C will still need to play that role of oversight for those projects that may be few and far between, but they could still appear, that choose not to engage with the A I P P program. Ideally, that C A C would have the aligned criterion that could still request public engagement for projects like that as well. Sure. And I'll go back to the slide and just keep going from there. So the next recommendation, oh, yep, that one's fine, is the staffing recommendation. So within the A I P P program, the recommendation from strategy is that there be a director within G C A C to lead the charge. This is something that's already been approved within G C A C and the funding is already approved as well. For the city of Columbus, what we recommend is for the, there to be a dedicated public art position within the city of Columbus. This is something that we anticipate the city will expand its support for the program as it grows to include that. At this time, the city's plan is to continue doing the public art coordination through existing planning staff. We are working on a few other projects that are public art projects outside of the scope of this work. And we really do feel that there is a, a need for a public art staffer that can coordinate between departments and bring people together. Public art is always very complex. It involves so many different bodies that we, our strong recommendation is that there is that staffer down the line.
I, I'd like to ask our city staff. Sophie, within your role, your current role, do you have other things that you are responsible for outside of the public art?
Yes.
Okay. When I, after I read this plan, I thought, how in the world could a part-time person, not that you're part-time, you're full-time, but how in the world could Sophie take on as much as there is in this plan, given the current situation? I'm one, I'm just wondering, what, what does the city say?
You handle it? You, Mark? Yes.
I'm looking at you, Mark.
I saw, you know, frequently these days is the planning division bean counter, which is indeed one of my primary roles. You know, what I'll say is that, you know, the function in my mind is like three primary parts. One is staffing the commission, and that's really Sophie's primary job at this point. Then we have the public art maintenance contract, administration of that contract, which involves a variety of duties, assessing and, and writing up specs and administering a contract. Morgan Grab is primarily handling that with the support of Amy Goodman, our preservation officer. So we're sort of divvying those two parts out. The third part, really, which is the current wildcard, is the coordination, is capital improvement planning and implementation. And, and that really is the case where, you know, there'll be some flex depending on what happens here. So we, we launched this plan, the A I P, the A I P P gets formed, dollars get allocated, and all of a sudden, we start turning down projects. Today, we do have staff within the development, within the planning division that have foredated and implemented capital improvement projects. Not public art, but sidewalks, park improvements. Believe it or not, a lot of the work is, is similar. It's coordinated with the given recreation of parks, public service. It's making sure that all the dots are, you know, it's not exactly the same. So we couldn't live that up if we had to today. We come, we'll evaluate it on, on a year-to-year basis. And the, and the plan recommendation is that a person is established because if we start turning out a lot of public art in the upcoming years, I mean, then Sophie's going to be in crunch.
Yeah.
We won't expect her to live that out. She, her job is going to be staff as a position. Morgan's job is going to be to administer the contract with coordination of public art. If it happened today, Alex Sowersmith from our team and others would get involved and provide that support. And there are projects that could be on the cusp at any moment. And if we needed him, he would step in. But that's, that's not a hundred percent clarity on that, but that's sort of.
It's a wait-and-see.
It's, 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 I think, really get the plan, the plan in action, establish the funding sources, evaluate, and take on. And, and others, and, and that's the planning division's perspective. You know, the department's perspective, you know, I can't speak for Director Steve as right now, but if he were here, that's what I would be telling him is the same as what I'm telling you now.
Out of curiosity, just from where I sit here, you know, should, should there be a great influx of public artists, right? And, and we're all hoping there will be, which would be really exciting. I just want to kind of put it out there, a recommendation in tandem with the recommendation in the plan, that all of that work that you just discussed, the three different kinds of problems, that they might be consolidated into one position. To someone who would truly be a liaison be- between all of these different.
Absolutely. Understood.
I think it's a missed opportunity to not make us liaison and stuff. It's something there that's missing for me. Like, we've been on this thing, on this road with you. And at this point, everything in this, to me, feels like it's going to be something that exists and takes off. And the commission's still here, just being, we've been told we're sale. So how is this improving what's already happening at the, for the commission? I'm not sure I see that, but I'm also understanding that the public art plan was always about improving what we already got going on. So for me, it's that when we hit the fork in the road, that the commission may not be necessary. And now we're pulling back, saying we're going to keep it. But then I'm still trying to identify where we exist. And one other thing I want to say, the comment keeps being made that not all projects will have to come here because if it's not a city property project, it doesn't need to come here. But then you say, if it doesn't need funding, it can come straight here. So my question is, where is that? What about those developers and those conversations in the private, in the, you know, on their property in the private source? Where they don't have to come here and they don't need your funding? Are we really creating a plan that requires folks to come through the city and kind of respect this ecosystem of public art that's happening? Or is it just kind of creating different parts to insert into the conversation? I'm just still, I'm sorry, I'm like being like this, but I, I have so many kind of questions and just still trying to get that through.
It's for sure. I, I think part of it is, there are, there are things that we learned. We just don't have the power to require of, of people. So though I think there was the desire to really have more control in some regards, there, there are, the city cannot require legally for certain entities to go through certain, if there, if there isn't the need.
What's an example?
But if I be Edwards, that Ashelman.
That's an example.
That's an example, right? What's that? The downtown.
Jamie.
Yeah.
So I guess the reason why I'm kind of concerned is because when I think about preservation, when I think about even like the, the big situation we're in with the Columbus statue, right? Just putting public art up without it being kind of vetted or at least somebody saying something to somebody can create an issue. So how, even though we can't require these developers and folks who are coming in to run it past us, can there be something as far as the tools or resources that's created that recommends that they do so? Because I do think that a lot of the reason why we got here is because people don't know the proper way to, you know, insert their project into the conversation or to go, what is the ways to go about it? And even though there are these kind of like nuances where it's like, well, we can't require them to do that, we can still tell them to have some, you know, this is how you should, this is what we recommend that you do if you want community buy-in.
I do think that we, that's one of the, you know, kind of guiding strategic goals of this is to create that lane and to create that space for people to realize their projects in a way that helps them have community buy-in, helps them understand common practices, best practices, not only as it relates to maybe their personal property, but how they interact with artists.
Right.
How that selection process is meant to go. The toolkit that is part of this plan will live online. And then my vision gets repackaged specifically for the constituencies that need to, you know, absorb that information. One of our goals too is, you know, to really focus on education, understanding not only how artists, you know, you and I definitely understand, you know, the plight of the artist trying to realize a project or take it next step in the career. We're not only focused on people like that, we're actually focused on the people that will be commissioning and developing and do have resources. They need to also receive education and understand how public art will be created in Columbus and that we can share the same language, you know, artists and people that are commissioning this work, as well as community members that are playing a role. I think a lack of clarity and not understanding what the various expectations are that go with creating public art have caused us to have instances, which I think that you're kind of alluding to, right? Where you don't have community buying. I do want to say quickly too, that in this, you know, in, in the strategy that we've laid out and in my greatest vision, if there's amazing art happening in the city that really comes out of this, I don't really see how the C A C's role doesn't actually become enhanced and more active. If we have a community art plan that we need to come together and prioritize sites and all kinds of things that will bring intersections to the work that we're trying to realize together, we can't do that and get to that place without the C A C, right? And having that dialogue. I also think that these, while it seems a little, you know, complex, you know, you know, as well as everybody, public art's complex, having project-specific selection teams will really change the way public art shows up in the neighborhood.
So just for the record, I'm, that's the, that's the part I do like. It's the advisory committee makes me nervous. The selection teams sound like a very wonderful way to accomplish.
The advisory committee is really crucial to the program's internal governance, you know, and ability to get off the ground. To also, we, you know, G A, G C A C has allocated, you know, money for the program director. But we really need a whole kind of cadre of expertise around that program in order for it to thrive. So we have created, we're not going to share that at this meeting, but it's something that G C A C board is approving, a competency matrix, a job description. Who are the people that are going to be on this committee and what are their roles? And what are we asking of them? Trying to be very clear about that as well. So again, that the expectations that everyone comes into this process with are clear.
Do you guys have any questions that happen?
Please.
One of the questions I wrote, wrote down in, is, so one of the things I absolutely know about G C A C is they don't do education, right? So when I hear you say things like, we're going to be the education zone for artists and things like that, I'm like, kind of confused because.
Well, I'm speaking very specifically about.
The artists, right? So I guess my question is, the A I P P projects that potentially could be prioritized, will that ever be about youth artists? Or is that touched too much in education? What I'm feeling, so what I'm feeling is, okay, I'm like ten, fifteen years in the game. I, I, I've, I've got some history that I'm dealing with here. But Franklin County used to give arts education money to all of our programs locally here in Columbus. Those programs were teaching kids how to do murals, teaching kids how to create art. Since Franklin County shifted their funding to G C A C, G C A C has now softly started to pull back on the funding that they're giving those kinds of programs. Understandable. But where do those programs get to show up when they also are applying for summer camps and violence prevention stuff and they're not qualified? So when we talk about the artist, the artist starts as early as a baby, right? Like, we're cultivating children into being lifelong artists, essentially. So I just have kind of a few questions around how that this, for us to get excited about this, will this also open up any doors or connections that are being closed in that avenue when it comes to, and I know Jamie was going to talk about, but that, that funding to the young artists too, where we've seen now a lot of things are being pulled back in the education in the arts because of how our funding is followed. Can I address this? We probably have to talk about Tuesday and what we planned in our eyes.
Yeah. Would you, would you mind? Sorry. I'm bringing a check up. Okay. Sorry.
Swear me in.
Yes. Can you raise your right arm, state your name, and swear affirm to tell the truth, all truth?
Jamie Goldstein, I swear to tell the truth, all truth, and nothing. I just want to, I just want to serve my education.
Yeah.
So we, G C A C is prohibited from, with our contracts from the city, from funding education programs K through twelve. We do education for artists through our workshops, through our work with navigators, et cetera. The, I think one of the primary goals for establishing this additional funding source from the city and county is to not have that restriction in the public art program and, and the kinds of. and, and the kinds of projects we undertake, that there can be mentorship of kids of any age. Right? And that youth, and that youth artists can be involved in these, in these projects along with mentor artists and that they're, and so that there's no funding restriction there. There is a very specific desire to create um, artist curriculum. And we, and you know, we have open conversations with C C A D, like John to talk a little bit more about that. Uh, that's separate from that, but I, I wanted to address the program that our hope is to not have restriction on age for educating artists within this public art program.
That'll solve a lot of that issue. That'll be good.
Yes, Jamie, thank you.
Okay, let's see, where are we? Do anything else in the staffing? I think we can go to the next slide. Okay.
Okay, so this is a, a very general overview about the A I P P advisory commit, committee, the structure and the role. So as Jana laid out, this committee would really be a support for the program. Um, because there's going to be a big need. We envision this being a, a committee staff by a a, a group of people who have the skill set to provide support. So um, from um, artists, architects, designers, um, to folks who might have experience fundraising, um, things specific to the program that would be, that would be an assistance. Um, the idea is that this committee would provide strategic oversight. Um, and uh, provide support for all the different aspects of the, of the program, from site selection to even assisting in putting together these uh, selection teams, right? Because uh, we would also like to see diverse geographic representation since our goal is to have art around the city. It would be fantastic to have people in different places in the city that could also bring their contacts and their knowledge of those communities to help us assemble these selection teams when there's art there. Um, this is going to be a group that is really, we're asking them to roll up their sleeves and work. Um, so there would be a lot of operational responsibilities specifically in the first six months. Um, because there's the whole process of determining the mission. You know, we're working currently with the draft mission that was crafted by the steering committee. Um, it's time to move on beyond that to really think about a program and it defining its mission. And we really see that as something that a group of people working together should, should uh, be responsible for. Um, and then um, like the review teams I mentioned, um, as well as offering other kinds of recommendations and referrals in this whole process. Um, overhaul is really going to be about helping make sure that the program is doing what we set out to do in terms of goals, in terms of quality of work. Um, and in terms of uh, maintaining the kind of integrity that we want. And so this is a body that will have oversight with that, always serving beneath the uh, board of trustees. So final say will be from the board of trustees and they will be tasked with these responsibilities for the program. We move on to the next slide. Okay, so um, starting to talk a little bit about the artwork approval process. Um, I actually touched on this before in answering your question. But the goal would be to really have an alignment between the criteria used both by the A I P P program and the C A C. Making sure that the process is coordinated and as efficient as possible. And we understand also that this is going to be something that will evolve. We need to figure out the best way of making it work. And really, it's going to have to happen as we work together. Um, and we see a, a need for continued collaboration. Um, so uh, the review criteria being like it's critical. Uh, and as we move closer to the launch, we just feel we need to continue these conversations and engagement.
So the launch has been set for fall, for sure?
That, well, for sure is always hard to say. That is our, that is our goal. That is what we're working towards. But there are all these approvals that have to happen before then. And we are, you know, moving along, trying to get everything done. That's our goal. Um, and that's what we hope.
I'm on section, I mean, part two. Steps for building public art program. Page seven. Um, just one language that kind of wrote me, caused me pause. Um, the C A C appointed by the mayor should maintain authority over public art. That's great. The third bullet says the C A C should adopt or align their approval criteria to be consistent with the A I P P.
So that's what I've been talking about where both bodies are going to have to, the A I P P approval process that happens in the project selection teams and the C A C's approval process. It would work best if the criteria are aligned so that when the project approval happens within the project selection teams, they will be looking at similar things that the C A C will be looking at as well.
So you review what our criteria policy is and how we adopt it.
Actually.
Take a look at that.
So there was a look at that, but what happened, how this conversation actually initiated was we provided a, a criteria in the uh, body of the document. And then uh, it was actually Sophie who said, oh, this would be a really interesting thing to align on. The actual specifics is something that it makes sense to work collaboratively. Um, things that we would definitely want to add is the possibility of public engagement being part of that process. Uh, I think that for us, that funding is missing and we feel strongly that the best of public art in terms of benefiting the community comes when the public is engaged in true engagement. And um, we want to make sure that that's something that there's a structure for that and for including that in the process.
Janelle, I'm curious, I put some explanations with that. As in like, yay, you know? This is a really great thing that we get to be more aligned. Um, I think right now, according to me, we don't have specific criteria, right? Like just the fact that we're beginning to develop them is a really great thing.
I just was, just confused by a non-existing body. Um, or an existing body having to align itself to a non-existing body. Um, and the language just reads like we're supposed to align to something that hasn't been created. At some versus, right? If, if there's something already in place that we are using, then it would just make better sense to that. It was a red flag for me. I was like.
No, I think we can change that. I think we can adjust the wording there, so.
I get it completely. I just want to make sure that, that that's.
I, I too wanted to just say that I'm very excited that uh, there will be C A C representation on the selection committee, correct? For every, so we, we are going to be a, a part of the process more than we ever have in the past.
Yeah.
We're going to have more knowledge.
We realize such amazing projects without your presence there.
Right.
Right to.
Yeah.
The.
No surprises.
Right.
Exactly.
Um, and to help understand all the points at which needs that, you know, point of contact with the larger group as well.
I also have a note on here. How are we defining stakeholders and developers?
In which section are you?
I'm all over this.
You're up.
Right, I'm sorry.
Yes.
But like, I, I have my definition, but I want to make sure that it's the same.
I know, do whatever.
Okay.
There was one, it's like, oh, these are all.
Well, yes, stakeholders, I mean, there are many, right? So it is used as a general term in that regard, but um.
Third section.
Okay.
There's a list of.
That's where I saw it.
There's a list of kind of, you know, zoning, downtown strategic plan, uh, metropolitan link us, those kinds of things.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I think that's where his question, he, like, how are we defining stakeholders?
Yeah. And because those sound like, more like developers than stakeholders. And then who gets to qualify under that?
Hmm.
It doesn't have to be answered today.
Okay.
Honestly, like, this is not a gotcha moment.
No, no, no. Yeah, yeah.
An opportunity for us to have a discussion room because when we use those terms loosely,
Mm-hmm.
that causes me um, alarm a little bit, especially with respect to who is giving what and dollar amounts attached to based upon our proximity, which really puts us in a precarious position because now someone who is a stakeholder but has dollar backing could potentially infiltrate this and make this not a fair um, or equitable platform. So how we define who stakeholders are and who developers are is going to be.
Thank you. Yeah. Thank you for that, actually.
And I think we can go on to the next slide. Okay, so. And if you don't, we, we gave you the printout.
We tried to make a more legible slide, so this might not be, but we, we gave you this information, it just didn't look as legible maybe in the thing.
This is better. It's better than what was in the original.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so this starts to talk a little bit about the potential art approval process through the A I P P program. And um, this is uh, I guess less specifically, less specifically the approval process, but kind of what we could foresee how projects would move along um, through the program. And so the first thing is the need to identify opportunities. And so we think it's really critical for the A I P P staff, the advisory committee, as well as working closely with city departments um, and county, the county as well, to identify those opportunities ahead of time, right? So many, it's so much more cost-effective, so much uh, there's so many more possibilities when public art is integrated early in the process. And so the goal would be to have those conversations early with our partners, identify those projects and begin to put them in this uh, workflow for the A I P P program. Um, the next thing is to discuss and prioritize. Um, something that is really critical for the program as well is to think about issues of equity in terms of how work is distributed um, and making sure that there is greater access. And so in terms of prioritizing projects, that's something that will be a part of the conversation as well, right? Um, there is the desire to expand the reach of public art. There need, that needs to be something that is intentional and uh, choices made to make that actually happen. And so making sure that we have a process where it's not just um, but we prioritize projects to make sure that there's greater equity. Um, the next, next part would be to actually begin drafting the plan. Once some priorities are selected, there's going to be an annual plan created every year that would outline the priority projects for that year. We see that as a document that could be shared with the C A C in order to get approval on sites and to have everybody in the know about what's coming and what's happening. That would also be uh, a chance to update on the status of projects that are continuing since more complex projects will probably be multi-year. Um, after the, that, that annual plan would be approved internally um, and then shared. Um, after that, uh, it would be approved uh, internally by the board of G C A C. Um, and uh, the, the budget for the projects would also be approved through G C A C, any funding that's internal to G C A C. Um, moving on, uh, the A I P P advisory committee uh, would be expected to provide support in making these projects a reality. Um, and we see that as uh, also something that we would need a partnership with the C A C. Because as we discussed earlier, the project selection committees, we would really love to have C A C participation there. Um, of course, we still need to work through city approvals. That's its own different layer, um, where our close partnership with the city would definitely help move those things along. Um, and then the seventh point there is that kind of wild card where um, it really isn't, the seventh point is kind of like its own separate pathway. There is the potential for projects to not decide to go through the A I P P program. And any of those projects that are in the city of Columbus would still need to go through the approval process through the C A C. If it's some private property, property, obviously that would be different. But the bulk of projects would be expected to at some point need approval.
Um, and this is really our final slide, um, just to kind of wrap up and tell you that we are starting to share the strategy. Um, you are the first to see it and then we will start to share it more widely um, over the next month. Um, we are, you know, still committed to responsiveness, so everything that's been, you know, shared here will be uh, discussed. Um, and mulled over with our team and we will be back uh, at the next hearing and we can pick up on some of those uh, you know, threads that we laid out today. Um, it will not need, it says, as a regional initiative housed within a nonprofit, you know, the program does not need formal legislative approval, but we are going to seek ceremonial recognition through city hall uh, to mark the milestone, hopefully in the fall. Um, and then of course, we're excited to be working alongside you guys over the, you know, the course of the next few months very closely as we try to get this um, you know, program from vision to reality. Um, and of course, you know, uh, we just wanted to go out on this note to say that this is a historic uh, step for the city to try to formalize this and to create this body that can commission new public art. Um, I think everyone in this room wants to see more of it. Um, so thank you for your time today. Um, if you have any more questions, we're still here um, and available today, but we do want to offer um, you know, our time one-on-one to over the next month, uh, as you have questions and more time to dive into the, the strategy.
I just wanted to thank you and to say how remarkable this plan is. It's so detailed. I really am delighted to see so much thought into all these different areas. The toolkit is absolutely fabulous. I'm just so stoked about that and I think there's a lot of potential there. The majority of my questions are in section two, but there are, there are smaller questions, so I'll figure out a way you know, to, to uh, address those or answer those. I started to make a kind of org chart for myself, you know, in terms of how the city functions in relationship to the A I P P. So that's really kind of what I'm interested in, in, in terms of like collaboration, how the legislature might work.
Us too. That's what we want to really get into.
Yeah. Um, but thank you so much for, this is, I feel like this, I don't feel this, this is a map and it's, it's really incredible. Thank you.
I, I have a uh, question. Um, it's something that kind of jumped off the page was uh, the term limits uh, or term length, not limit. Uh, three to five years for commission members. Um, wh- when can we have those conversations? What, when would be an appropriate time or do you even want feedback from us on those sorts of things?
And we're talking about, you were talking about you all.
Yes, exactly.
I mean, I, I mean, I'm coming, Josh, and so, I mean, just, really, I mean, we had, we were having some sort of uh, preliminary discussions about a variety of things that relates to the commission over the last couple of years. Um, and then really is the, is the art plan developed and says, well, we should really pause. Um, you know, in order to let the art plan come to play and then make sure we're responding to it. That being said, anytime, I mean, I think we really don't want, as the art plan advances, we want to be prepared to work with you all who address a variety of things to make sure it was aligned with the art plan or, or what, including that. So I mean, I don't think there's any technically anything that would hold us back at this point. Having a conversation with you all and perhaps with another candidate, as I said, Josh.
Yep, that sounds absolutely on point with what I was thinking, Mark. And this discussion made me think of something else about how, how we can make sure a commission member can serve as a liaison to the A I P P. I think it can be done, so let's talk about it. It will probably require a code change and maybe some amendment to your appointment resolutions, but I think it can be done and.
Would this be a business meeting? I am chance.
Could be, yeah.
Yeah.
I think that's a great idea.
Let's call for a business meeting.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Um, I just wanted, since you're coming back next month.
Yes.
Um, so for me, I feel like I've been a part of this since the beginning. I'm definitely going to need some talking points for artists in understanding what's happening as far as this whole thing, okay? Like even as a commissioner, right? I'm supposed to sit in this seat and have a certain oath. I'm supposed to sit in the seat and have a certain oath to the residents and the artists and things. There's still a lot of gray areas in this document. I appreciate it. I, I think it's very lovely, like they said, but for me, we're still combing it through. There's still some details we've got to figure out and I just would, you know, I'm thinking maybe we also at the same time start working on these talking points that are going to need to launch at the same time because I'm, I remain to be a voice in this project whether you see me or not, and I need to know what to say. You know what I mean? And so there's a lot, there's a lot of layers to this. So just having like those quick, like simplified explanations to have, to get artists comfortable on what's happening here. Because we've also taken longer than we said. We also ran into some, some dead ends and had to, you know, restructure. So as we come out of the smoke and we say, we're proud of this plan, I'm gonna, I just need some, I'm gonna need some talking points and some, you know. You know.
Well, I'm really glad I'll have you to work with, honestly. I'm happy that we'll have you to work with, excuse me, because definitely, there's no doubt that this is going to remain work that we need to continue to do together. And, you know, I think that the protracted kind of disengagement we've had with some of the people that we engaged really early on in the plan.
Yeah.
You know, weighs heavy and is something that definitely we're putting a lot of focus on so that when we do step out again and are ready to have that conversation with confidence, that we really feel like the important pieces are in place, there will be more work to do. But over the next month even, I would love to meet with you and have some of these like really detailed conversations about the specific information you feel. Is it outside of just the broad update and reorientation to the plan, which I know everybody needs? I know there are specific questions or expectations or demands that certain communities are going to put upon this program once it's launched. And of course, we want to be ready to meet those, yes.
Thank you so much. Can I add something else? I just wanted to say that, you know, I was at certain points, you know, where's the plan, where's the plan?
Yeah.
Now I know what took so long. I, I, I'm embarrassed that I felt that way, but I didn't know. I didn't know and this is fantastic.
Thank you for that. And, you know, with all that information, it does require letting people to have the time to go through it and actually absorb it and give the feedback so that then we can get to a place where we can feel more confident sharing it. So thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
Okay, until next time.
I think we have more.
Honored to attend this one.
Sorry.
I did have the chair and vice chair elections. And I met, there are only four of us here, a week ago today.
Are you that comfortable?
I'm comfortable.
I do expect self foundation.
I would like to make known. I would like to nominate our newest members and chair and vice chair, kind of in that order. So Jamal, Chair, Shelby, Vice Chair.
I second that.
I was definitely about to say Jamal Chair.
So can that be my recommend?
Yeah.
If you are comfortable with it. Allowing us to be allowed to begin so well. Jamal will make a great.
Second for Shelby as well.
Well, thank you. I'll take it.
Do we need a motion or a vote?
And second and then a vote.
I make a motion that Jamal will be Chair of the Commission. Shelby too will be Vice Chair.
And I second that loudly and strongly. Hi.
Thank you.
Hey.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
Ryan, thank you. Thank you.
And your family. Finally. Two years. And why leave now? Where are we about to start saying?